Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please stay standing for a moment of silence, please. Silence, bear. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Beckowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonerotti.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Zacharetti-Chakas.
Here.
Mr. Palmeri.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
We have 15 members present.
That was a good meeting one, how's it? Talking about very...
Certificate 13163-24.
That's a proclamation recognizing Andrew Beckley for his contributions and success to Allegheny County sponsored by council members Katina, Palmeri, Fatoulas, and all other members of council.
Andy, want to come up, please? Good to have you here, good to see you. Now, I don't normally do many of these, but Andy, this is a whole nother matter. I had the pleasure of working with Andy for the past several years, running the Parks Department and me being Chair of the Parks. We've had a lot of meetings, a lot of collaboration, a lot of conversation over the years. So, now, this is a lengthy proclamation. So, I have one, two, three, almost four pages. I'm going to read them all, okay? So, bear with me. Okay. Proclamation recognizing Andrew "Andy" Beckley. Whereas, Vincent Lombardi once said, "The price of success is hard work, dedication to the job at hand, and the determination that whether we win or lose, we have applied the best of ourselves to the task at hand." That quote depicts the true essence of Andrew "Andy" Beckley's character. His 21 years dedicated to Allegheny County Parks significantly enhancing the parks and the communities they serve. And whereas as Director of County Parks, Mr. Beckley oversees staff, programs, facilities, and over 12,000 acres of land that make up Allegheny County's nine parks. He has been Director of this active park system since May of 2003. And whereas, under his leadership, the Parks Department has grown substantially, transitioning from public works management to an independent, efficient operation. Mr. Beckley also has guided the formation of Friends of the Park groups, worked with a newly established Parks Foundation, upgraded aging facilities, negotiated land acquisitions, instituted programs, and collaborated with multiple communities and other organizations to create premium recreational opportunities. I'm just getting started. Whereas, Mr. Beckley initiated the Park Ranger Division and numerous programs run by this division, and established the Landscape Architecture Division, enhancing the park's safety, education, beauty. And whereas, Mr. Beckley prepared for the opportunity to serve in his current position with strong education and work experiences. He attended Ohio State University where he received a Bachelor of Science in Natural Resources and a Master of Science in Parks and Recreation Administration. His previous roles included Director of Parks and Recreation in Cranberry Township, Washington County. And whereas, you know what? I got, I gotta... Whereas, much of Mr. Beckley's success, he credits to the collaboration and negotiation skills he learned while growing up in Cincinnati, Ohio. As the youngest of seven children, he gained career direction as a Teen Recreation Leader for Cincinnati Recreational Commission. His people skills were honed during his years as a Whitewater raft guide at the New Golly Rivers in West Virginia. Okay, now, that's the end here. So, I want to make sure that I got it all. You know what? Okay, we're good. Now, therefore be resolved that we, Allegheny County Council, President Katina, Parks Committee Chairman John Palmeri, former Parks Committee Chairman Nicholas Fatoulas, and all members of council do hereby honor Andrew "Andy" Beckley for his contributions and successes to Allegheny County and to the enhancement of the well-being of the county citizens. We thank him for his hard work, intelligence, and dedication to the Allegheny County Parks Department for 21 years and wish him the best as he begins a new chapter of his life in retirement. In witness whereof, I hereby unto cause to seal the county of Allegheny County to be affixed this 24th day of September 2024, and attest Councilman Katina and myself, John Palmeri, and Nicholas Fatoulas. Thank you for your patience, ladies and gentlemen, and Andy, congratulations.
You'll get your chance. There, you can hang on to this while he...
Thank you.
Guess who wants to speak?
Well, you didn't think you were going to get away with this without me, did you? Okay. Well, Andy, I've been a county council as of December, it'll be 17 years. And you've been at, you were 21 years of, I believe. So, I'm not sure if I've been here too long or you weren't here long enough for that. But when I first took office, Fitzgerald made me the Chairman of the Parks Committee. And quite frankly, I thought he was putting me in charge of park benches at the time. Then I got to know Andy over the years much better because we started going out together to parks, and we were on the Parks Committee together with the foundation, where we met at the top of the Still Building, and it was a beautiful experience, and it was new, and it was just in its infancy. And I started asking Andy to take me to the parks to see the things, because if you're the Chairman of the Parks or a committee, you certainly want to know what you're dealing with by seeing it. So, the first park we had gone to was Harrison Hill. We had some projects out there. He showed me the, what do you call that, that house?
Environmental.
The adventure house, it was a...
Environmental.
Environmental house, yeah. And then he showed me some owls, owls, that were in the woods, and I have no idea how he knew they were there. But we had looked at the park, and we started replacing things such as new playgrounds that were handicap accessible, and then we did a new road there. And we moved on there to Hartwood Acres at one point, and they had asked me to come there because I was in the event business myself, and they were under revamp the event business to some extent. So, we spent the day there. And as a result, Andy had promoted a permanent facility behind Hartwood Acres in Hemlock Grove. It's a beautiful facility, and it was designed to hold events on a regular basis because we had a tent on grass, and we couldn't have an event every weekend because we were killing the grass. We had to move the tent, put the chairs in, take the chairs out. Sun, we needed rain. So, I said, "Andy, we need a permanent facility." So, sure enough, he did. And we also went down to the Carriage House and revamped that and turned it into a facility. So, I believe we did as many as six events per week during the busy season versus two or three a month. That was the difference at Hartwood Acres that Andy had created. We moved on to places like North Park. We had to replace, or should I say, cleaned out the lake because of the sediment. It was a $20 million project. Fifty percent of money came from the federal government. But that's where Andy's vision, they were looking at the boathouse. And the boathouse turned into over-the-bar restaurant. Then we brought in Go-Aid. Then it was the boating and the walking around the lake where they moved Inglewood Road over so we were, made it less dangerous for the pedestrians walking. And these are all the things, we turned North Park into a destination, not just a park, but a place where people wanted to go, and they had a beautiful experience at the restaurant. I remember the time that the parking got overflowed, the people parked on the grass, and it wasn't even a week later that a new parking lot was put in because of the overflow traffic, because so many people were showing up there. So, those are some of the things, even a new football field at North Park had, well, it wasn't a football field, it was just a field. It was soccer, and that because I remember my son playing there. But those are some of the things that we had done together. The most memorable, I had asked him to take me to, what's that, what's that place out there? Oh, Settler's Cabin. I forgot the name of the place. Settler's Cabin. And I saw a picture of the Botanical Gardens. So, I said, "Andy, I want to go see the Botanical Gardens." He said, "Okay, I'll take you out." So, I met Andy in the parking lot, and he couldn't stop laughing at me because he saw the license plate on my car that said, "Arrest me." Remember? Every time he talks about that license plate, he giggled and just chuckled. And then I looked at his vehicle, he had his front bumper tied on by a rope.
It was a county car.
And I asked him, I said, "What did you do wrong to get this vehicle?" I said, "Do you want me to talk to Fitzgerald? I think I can get you a better vehicle." He said, "No, no, no." He says, "I like this vehicle." He says, "Don't worry about it, don't worry about it." So, that was Andy, a very humble person. But we had gone around the park. He showed me all the places in the park that he wanted to highlight. And every time we left a location, I had asked him, "Where's Botanical Gardens at?" He said, "We'll get to it, I'm getting there." So, he takes me, shows me the strip mine, he shows me the path, he shows me, we went to go see the barn, which they wanted to turn into a banquet facility. And he says, "Come on with me." He says, "I want to show you, take a path down here." We're going down a path, and there was mulch, somebody raking, and we're in the woods. And I asked him, I said, "Andy, are you ever going to show me the Botanical Gardens? I've seen the pictures." He said, "You're standing in it." I was in the woods. There was no Botanical Gardens yet. It was just a vision of what was supposed to be there. And all day, during the day, he had me believing that it was going, I was going to see it. And quite frankly, you know, the compassion I saw with Andy over the years, I realized that his job wasn't a job, it was more like coming to work and just enjoying himself because of his compassion for the parks. It wasn't a job to Andy. And I was a little surprised to find out that you're retiring, because I figured, maybe you got a couple of good years in, but I'm wearing this shirt today because it's a fishing shirt. And Andy loves my fishing shirts, so... Andy?
All right.
I bought you a fishing shirt.
Nice.
To represent your retirement.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I know that you, I know you don't like the sun, so I got you long sleeves. So, I mean, we know each other pretty well, and quite frankly, Andy was my favorite director, and he knows it. And he told me once, just once, that I was his favorite councilman. Maybe just once. But anyhow, we spent a lot of time together, and you know, so happy for you to be able to retire at a younger age and enjoy your life, and I hope you can do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy lied when he told you he was, you were his best bud.
I remember saying it.
One other thing I just want to get to. When I first came down here, South Park was the weak sister. North Park was getting all the attention, all the, and other parks, and South Park was not really living up to any standards at all. Called Andy, and Andy and I started a real collaboration, is what's going on here at South Park? Things have changed dramatically down there. Corrigan Drive now is safe, you got a 25 mile an hour speed limit, you have places for biking, you have places for the walkers and runners. We have the Cascades now, which was, Andy, how long ago was the Cascades? That was shut down for years.
Three, oh, since the 60s, 70s.
Beautiful place now. We got a green parking lot up there across from the oval, the oval, the track. So many things have been done, and now, when I go down and run on Sundays, I don't have to hide anymore. People will come up and say, "Boy, this park really looks nice." And it does. The walls down there, so many, the green wall, so many things. So, I'm very grateful for having known this man and worked and had the privilege of working with him all these years. And again, Andy, thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
It's a pleasure, John.
Just one more thing, just one more thing. When I, when I became the Chairman of the Parks, I recall the message was that we were $100 million in need of repairs in our county parks.
Deferred maintenance.
Deferred maintenance. All of those deferred maintenance have been fixed. There's the man that did it.
You guys gave me the money.
There you go, Andy, great job.
Thank you. Wow, thanks a lot. Thanks for the proclamation. It's been an honor and a pleasure to be the county's Park Director. The county council has always been supportive of our parks, and I want to particularly thank current council members for the support that you have given me. Thank you.
Take your wife up for a picture.
Thanks, everybody. That's why I'm taking my shirt back.
That's right.
Thanks, everybody.
One, two, three.
Next up is Bill 13220-24, a proclamation declaring September 2024 to be National Dog Service Month sponsored by council members Filiagi and DiMarco. Could I be added, please? And Grisbeck.
I didn't know you guys were here yet. Either the Sabos?
We're glad you actually brought somebody here to actually behave, okay? They'll be the best behaved folks in this council meeting tonight.
Well, thank you, and your name? Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to say that, first off, in recognition of National Service Dog Month, Sam DiMarco and I are proud to present this proclamation to the K9 Companions for the incredible work that they do to fulfill a seriously important need in our country and our county. Some 64 million adults and children with disabilities need service dogs. Currently, only 16,000, it looks like, are in service. Jill and Barb are here from K9 Companions with their companions in training, right?
Yes, classes in training.
Okay, so, one service and one training to share in this great moment.
Thanks.
Great? The names of the, of our...
This dog's name is Vasco.
Vasco?
And?
Obass.
Okay.
Vasco and Obass are also here to join us. A bit about K9 Companions that I have done some research on is that they train dogs who can assist people with disabilities, 60 different types of disabilities, correct? Who specialize in aiding veterans with post-traumatic stress disorder, and others can become hearing dogs. We have a couple of dogs that I've heard from in the news who've already made the news, Coral and Penguin, and now we have these guys, right? And these ladies lovingly volunteer their services to train these dogs for many, many people. I think it looks as if they're, they were founded in 1975, same year as Sir Pizza, I never want to miss that plug, and more than 7,000 graduate teams you've had, probably...
They hit 8,000 this year in February.
So, my research is a little old, 8,000 graduate teams, that's incredible. It's a collective effort, and I think that your team, you're the Western Pennsylvania chapter of the K9 Companions. Couple of the stories, Penguin, which I just referenced, was a dog that was placed with a 37-year-old man with cerebral palsy. And Penguin turns on light switches, opens doors, and even sleeps in his bed to ensure that he doesn't roll out. That's amazing. Other K9 Companion dogs interrupt, may interrupt nightmares for those suffering from PTSD, and they serve as hearing dogs for deaf individuals. But the remarkable things about what they do, these service dogs do, is give people with disabilities independence. And isn't that what we're all looking for? And something that comforts us all, the idea of our own independence. So, what they, what you all have done in a volunteer capacity is so incredible. So, getting on to the, if I could, the proclamation at hand. A proclamation declaring National Service Dog Month, whereas in September is National Service Dog Month, which is a time devoted to recognize the profound impact that service dogs have on the lives of individuals with disabilities, enhancing their independence, mobility, and overall quality of life. And whereas, in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability, but only 16,000 service dogs are capable of providing, from accredited training programs are providing that need. And whereas, K9 Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people by the, by way of what I've already described to you, and they provide people with disabilities expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. Whereas, K9 Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing services, and a deeply committed community of support. Whereas, National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. Whereas, Allegheny County continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are respected. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Council members Suzanne Filiagi and Sam DiMarco, do hereby recognize all service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, and declare September to be National Service Dog Month. We encourage all citizens to celebrate service dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the children, adults, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. Thank you very much. Thank you. Would you like, and here is the proclamation officially, and if you'd like to say something.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here. You've really captured the essence of K9 Companions. One thing I'd like to add is that we do provide our service dogs completely free of charge, so nobody who gets a dog from K9 Companions pays a dollar. And being a puppy raiser is the best job I've ever had, but given that I was a lawyer for 20 years, the bar is not really high in that. But I actually can't imagine a better job than raising a puppy and giving it away to somebody who really needs the puppy. So, thank you so much.
I would also add that it, estimates are upward of, it takes about $50,000 to train one of these dogs. So, when they say that they give them for free, that is an incredible task as well. So, thank you again. Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
All right.
Obass, Vasco, you guys want to speak?
They don't do that.
That's my least favorite command.
That's my least favorite command.
I got to ask a question. Is it okay to pet a service dog?
No, the rule is no. If you're obviously happy to ask, if you want to ask the person who has the service dog. And as far as training for me, I usually let people pet them because that speaks for them.
If you have a pet, you want to pet it now.
And then you want to jump in. All right. All right. All right. Thanks, guys. 1322-1-24 is a proclamation recognizing Jared and Jason Dahlgren Moots upon the distinction of being named a 2024 Permanent Family Recognition Award recipient, sponsored by Councilmember Macy. 1322-2-24 is a proclamation recognizing Francine Hazard upon the distinction of being named a 2024 Permanent Family Recognition Award recipient, also sponsored by Councilmember Macy. 1322-3-24 is a proclamation recognizing the Hungarian Reformed Church in America on the momentous occasion of their establishment, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
We have a number of individuals this evening from outside the county who wish to speak on an agenda item. The Commonwealth Sunshine Act, however, only grants residents of the county and the county taxpayers the right to speak at these meetings. Would any of the members like to make a motion to allow individuals from outside the county to offer comment at this time? So moved.
Oh, sorry, second.
Got a motion and a second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we're going to go down here to the approval. Okay.
First up is Robert Chung.
Like, Robert Chung representing the Millville Borough. I'd like to begin my remarks tonight by asking if the room, if we could take a brief silence. Thank you. That was 14 seconds. 14 seconds is how long Christian Hall had his hands raised in the air before his life was taken by state police on December 30th, 2020. Prior to that, a social worker offered to help speak with Christian and was turned away. Now, I don't know every emotion that this young man experienced on that day, but I know that he did not need to die. This has already affected constituents of our county, and I wish I couldn't say so. But in Allegheny County, resident of McKees Rocks, Ronald Williams was experiencing a mental health crisis in West Virginia when his girlfriend called 911 for help. A veteran and officer, Stephen Mater, received the difficult orders to take Williams' life. But his training as a Marine and his conscience told him to de-escalate the situation. Unfortunately, his superiors took Ronald Williams' life and Stephen Mater was fired. This is a pressing and urgent matter. Again, I wish it was not. In 2024 alone, when we have seen the video of Sonia Macy's life being taken when she called 911 for help. We have seen three additional Asian-Americans in this country, Yong Yang, Victoria Lee, and 19-year-old Win Rosario, lose their lives after they or their families called 911 just trying to get help. No parent, no sibling, no partner, no child should have to live with the fear that when reaching out for help, that they themselves or a loved one could be met with potentially lethal violence. We have to do better. 988 is just one of many resources that could have saved Christian's life that day. This past weekend, the Associated Press and PBS released an investigative piece showing the extreme levels of difficulty that international adoptees face. All of us, including the police, will benefit from these pieces of legislation that make mental health accessible for this Commonwealth, including adoptees, veterans, and all people of color, and having mental health crises handled by mental health professionals. We need to do better. This resolution of which has passed, similar of which have passed unanimously in other parts of the state are how we can do so. And Christian Hall should be alive. Thank you.
Next up is Robert Helwig.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Helwig. I live at 35 Rivier Way in Polish Hill, Pittsburgh, PA 15219, which is in District 13. Tonight, I ask council to vote in favor of the resolution to honor the life of Christian Hall and to urge the General Assembly to pass House Bills 1305 and 2533. The former would establish a dedicated revenue source to fund the 988 lifeline for suicide prevention and mental health crisis response. The latter would implement a campaign to apprise the public of the 988 lifeline and of ways to prevent suicide. In 2021, the National Institute of Mental Health estimated that nearly 58 million American adults, more than one in five, live with a mental illness. Said differently, Christian Hall lives in every borough, city, and township of Allegheny County. These Christian Halls are our friends, family, neighbors, and ourselves. People with these conditions, even those fortunate enough to have numerous close friendships or family connections, may not even be able to ask their specific support system for help during the nater of their crisis. This is just one reason why we need 988. Depression or other mental illness can be agonizing and desperate. In my experience, that agony and desperation surpassed only by the feeling of powerlessness to heal a loved one with mental illness when they are in a crisis. People with loved ones having mental illness understand the stress of knowing you cannot be available for them every second of every day. The fear of missing a phone call or of receiving a cryptic text message. And the panic of racing to reach them, hoping to intervene before they make a permanent fatal decision. Some of us too know the dilemma of choosing whether to call 911 and deciding whether that possible benefit to our loved one outweighs the unconscionable risk of introducing into their mental health crisis a stranger with a gun. This is just one more reason why we need 988. Funding 988 and publicizing the resource throughout Pennsylvania can drastically reduce that risk. Funding 988 and publicizing the resource throughout Pennsylvania can prevent suicides by providing the appropriate responder for those in crisis. House Bills 1305 and 2533 can accomplish both for the people of Allegheny County and for our Commonwealth. Council members, please vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Next up is Treble NLS.
Hello, hello. So first I would like to say that I advocate for statewide annual funding of 988. As someone who was 302ed myself for mental health issues, I'm fortunate enough to be here and alive. But unfortunately, not a lot of people share my same fortune. And in that moment of need, I was met with semi-automatic weapons in a moment when I needed empathy and guidance. And that is scary for anyone to have to deal with. And it makes it difficult to know what to do in those moments. The amount of people dealing with a mental health crisis can easily become overwhelming without proper resources. And some people in need of emergency mental health services may not speak or understand English. And it is crucial that 988 has the resources to hire culturally competent employees who can offer help to anyone, no matter what language they speak or understand. And what happened to Christian Hall can easily be prevented with proper funding. So I urge the council to please vote in favor of the resolution for Christian Hall. Thank you so much.
Next up is Corey Roma.
Set this for tall people size. Hello, council. My name is Corey Roma. I'm a resident of Crafton Borough. And I am here today to speak in support of the resolution honoring the life of Christian Hall, an exceptional young man whose life was heartbreakingly cut short while experiencing a mental health crisis, and calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass HB 1305 and 2533. As someone who battles with mental health issues myself, I've encountered my fair share of breakdowns and crises throughout my life. Thankfully, through a combination of friends, family, and treatment through amazing mental health professionals, I've been able to chug along in life. But for many, those same support systems are not available. And passing these two bills would take a great leap towards filling the chasms that exist in our current system, especially during a heightened time of tension, stress, and violence faced not only by our Asian-American community, but our Arab, Muslim, Jewish, and immigrant neighbors, both here in Pittsburgh and across the nation. It is crucial that we develop a culturally sensitive and competent mental health network to meet everyone who's in need where they're at. And passing this resolution could go a long way in pressuring our state senate to bring these two bills for a vote. In closing, I'd also like to take a moment to honor the life and memory of Christian Hall, who I've come to learn was a truly beautiful human being and who deserves to be alive along with all of us in this room. And through these measures, we can make a genuine effort to alleviate the mental health crisis and prevent further tragedies like Christian experienced from happening again. Thank you.
Next up is Madison Hallman.
Hello, my name is Madison Hallman. I'm a resident of the city of Pittsburgh. I'm here to testify in support of the resolution introduced by County Councilmember Bethany Hallam, which honors the life of Christian Hall and urges the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass House Bill 1305 and House Bill 2533. I've worked as a social worker for the past five years with four of those years at agencies in Allegheny County. Prior to that, I grew up with family members experiencing mental illness, including a family member that required multiple emergency services to be called during emergency crises. It was an incredibly scary thing to witness as a child. And my family and I still, to this day, talk about how those moments could have been improved if we had the appropriate resources to de-escalate and to improve, and to improve the outcome for my sibling. In my previous work with patients experiencing chronic mental illness, I was regularly terrified that I would receive a call that one of these patients was interacting with emergency personnel due to a mental health crisis out on the street. I knew it was not a safe place for them to be. And I knew that these people that I had known to be competent and safe individuals that were deserving of care would be seen as dangerous rather than someone in need of help. There's no excuse for that. Someone experiencing a mental health crisis, anyone experiencing a mental health crisis should be able to receive the emergency support that they need safely. The loss of Christian Hall and the tireless work of the Hall family cannot be overlooked. It needs to be an impetus for change that this system so desperately needs. The current lack of culturally competent and compassionate mental health support during crises is a disservice to those in need. It can be deadly. There is no excuse for there not to be adequate mental health support. There is no excuse for there not to be crisis management in place. There is no excuse for lives cut short because someone chose to take the incredibly brave and often difficult step of asking for help. This is a matter of life and death for many people. The mental health system is already overloaded due to lack of funding, lack of staffing, lack of resources. But bills like this give me hope and make me want to keep working in it. It is a necessity that we pass these bills because they might not only offer the opportunity for improved care and outcomes, but could change the course of someone's life entirely. Thank you.
Next up is Phoebe Bellaccio.
Hello, my name is Phoebe Bellaccio. I'm a resident of Highland Park, 15206. And I'm a Chinese-American adoptee. I'm here today to support the resolution 13232-24, introduced by Councilmember Hallam. Christian Hall was an Asian-American and an adoptee. Asian-Americans are overlooked and underserved by current mental health resources. Research studies also show adoptees are about four times more likely to assume suicide as compared to non-adopted peers. And adoptees who die by suicide experience higher rates of mental health comorbidity as compared to non-adoptive people who also die by suicide. Christian Hall's story is one example of the inadequacy of the current mental health resources in Pennsylvania. Structures and policies in place are not culturally competent nor responsive to the needs of Asian-Americans, adoptees, disabled people, and people of color. We deserve high-quality treatment and care during a mental health crisis. In Pennsylvania, we have this opportunity now to advance the House Bills 1305 and 2533. And in Allegheny County here, we can pass this resolution to honor the life of Christian Hall and prevent events like this in the future. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Lisa Graves-Marcucci.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lisa Graves-Marcucci, and I'm a lifelong resident of the Mon Valley, currently living in Pleasant Hills. I'm here tonight to strongly support the proposed increased fees for the Allegheny County Health Department permitting. First, companies applying for new or renewed Title V operating permits should be responsible for covering the costs of staff time to review those applications. Some of these permits can take 12 months or longer due to their complexity. And appropriate funds must be available to ACHD to ensure the air permits are written and enforced properly. Second, increased fees are essential to ensure that ACHD can hire and maintain staff members with expertise in the Federal Clean Air Act, as that is the standard to which these permits are held. Without federal Clean Air Act expertise, which we currently do not have, ACHD runs the risk of issuing illegal permits that end up being litigated because they are not in compliance with required federal standards. Two are currently in that situation. The US EPA Environmental Protection Agency recently issued two scathing orders rejecting ACHD's Title V permits for the US Steel Clerton Coke Works and the Edgar Thompson plants. They were requiring, the federal government is requiring ACHD air team to redraft those permits. Those federal orders were a result of legal petitions filed by environmental groups. We are still waiting for the ACHD to finalize those permits. And finally, most importantly, the air program is on loan to us from the federal government. And if we cannot properly staff and fund that program through ACHD, we will lose the privilege of air permitting and air enforcement. In 2018, the US EPA issued a significant report. And in that report, which was an audit of our Title V program, they said chief among the recommendations was, quote, "Ensure collected permit fees are sufficient to fund the Title V program." I commend the Board of Health for moving the issue of fee increases forward, which I understand is on the agenda tonight. And for those who might claim that the Board of Health's vote to recommend the fee increases involved a procedural error, I'd like to point out the problem-- They cannot make recommendations if they don't have a quorum, which they haven't had for over six months. Increased fees are a essential first step to addressing the inadequacies that the EPA has recommended in order to ensure that our program is in compliance with the Federal Clean Air Act, and we need to staff it with expertise in that federal law. I urge County Council to move forward with the appropriate measures to make sure that these fee increases happen so we can maintain our air program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Perkins.
I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution honoring the life of Christian Hall. I work at Casa San Jose. Casa San Jose envisions a Pittsburgh region that celebrates culture, welcomes immigrants, and embraces inclusion, dignity, and respect. And I believe that passing this resolution would be a step in the right direction. I'd like us all to imagine what it would be like to go to the doctor after we've been putting it off for quite some time, because people keep telling us that we're imagining our pain, right? And we go to the doctor, and we point to the doctor where it hurts, and they don't understand what you're talking about. And you explain how you got to that pain, like what led up to it, and they don't understand, and they keep telling you that you're making it up, and also that you don't have enough money to pay for it. These are some examples of what it's like when especially immigrants and people that don't speak English are trying to express their pain, especially in terms of mental health issues. In 2021, one of Casa San Jose's community members, his friends called 911 because he was having a schizophrenic episode. Paramedics showed up, but they didn't feel equipped to handle the situation, so they called the police, and Pennsylvania State Police showed up. I'd like to point out that Pennsylvania State Police lost, had to pay $865,000 in a settlement for racially profiling Hispanic folks recently, so just for some context. So Pennsylvania State Police showed up, and within moments, they told him to raise his hands, to show his hands, but because they didn't provide interpretation, he did not do that. They gave him a charge of simple assault, two charges of harassment, disorderly conduct, and resisting arrest when he didn't even understand he was under arrest. This is a person that was having a mental health episode. He was given a $25,000 bail, and since then, he has passed away. I urge you to vote in favor of this bill because these are real lives, or this resolution because these are real lives and the services are gravely needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Irene Tando.
Hi, my name is Irene, and I'm speaking to support the resolution honoring the life of Christian Hall and urges PA State Senate to pass House Bills relating to the funding and education of the mental health crisis line. I think this resolution is really important because it raises awareness on the poor mental health infrastructure in Pennsylvania. And not only that, but it raises the question of why are we spending so much of our money on police and guns when they're there to protect and serve, but when it comes down to it and we call them to protect and serve, they just put bullets in their bodies? And as an Asian-American and an immigrant, I feel like I was taught, growing up here, to suppress my emotions and not share it with other people, especially people not in our community, because we were taught that we can't be othered and we have to assimilate. And I think on top of that, it is because we have a fear that if we tell those people the people that are supposed to help us might hurt us, whether it be mentally or physically. And because mental health crises appear differently amongst different cultures, I feel like growing up too, like my parents told me that, you know, these American people, they won't understand, or they don't, they won't understand you, because it's, yeah. And I'm just going to talk about my own personal story. When I was 19, I actually was extremely suicidal, and I did try to kill myself. However, my friend was there, and the difference, I guess, between Christian and I, and me and other people who have been murdered by the hands of the state, is that my friend and I did not call 911. She ended up just taking me to the hospital. And I think about with Christian, he was so brave and trusted the police, and they called 911, and the people that were there that were supposed to protect them, instead of giving them a hand, pointed a gun at him and killed him. So, and we've heard from so many people that this story is not unique, even with Sonia Massey, where she was clearly suffering from mental health illness, the same thing happened with her. So I urge people to vote to pass this resolution in hopes that it will raise more awareness of the bigger problem in Pennsylvania and across the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sakai Kikuchi.
My name is Sakai Kikuchi, and I'm the organizing director at the Asian Pacific Islander Political Alliance of Pennsylvania. We're a statewide civil rights organization of Asian-Americans that advocates for a more just and inclusive commonwealth for all communities. And I want to speak in support of the resolution honoring the life of Christian Hall, who absolutely should be here, who cannot be replaced, and whose parents have really spearheaded advocacy efforts for the passage of House Bill 1305, which aims to create a dedicated stream of funding for the 988 mental health crisis line, and House Bill 2533, which seeks to fund a public education campaign about 988, which includes culturally competent materials. We know that our mental health needs are not one-size-fits-all. We all have unique histories, both as individuals and as members of different communities. We know that Asian-Americans are three times less likely to reach out to a mental health professional than their white counterparts. Personally, as a member of the LGBT community, I know that 40% of trans people will attempt suicide in their lifetimes. Today, a person experiencing a mental health crisis is more likely to encounter law enforcement than to receive treatment or crisis intervention. And law enforcement can spend up to one-fifth of their time responding to and transporting individuals with mental illness to emergency departments or jails. Personally, as someone who has sat with multiple loved ones and friends experiencing suicidal episodes, I can say that people in mental health crisis need absolutely to be met with compassion, with trained professionals. We absolutely need more resources for it. People do not need to be faced with violence or escalation when they're experiencing a mental health crisis. So we absolutely need to fund mental health resources and decriminalize the experience of people with mental health struggles. So I really want to encourage the Allegheny County Council to pass this resolution and to do all in your power to continue advocating for community support services for mental health and end to state violence.
Next up is Julie Platt. Ms. Platt is not speaking? Next up would then be Amina Arshad.
My name is Amina Arshad, and I'd like to share my story with you. But before I go into it, I'd like to thank Councilmember Bethany Hallam for honoring the life of Christian Hall and supporting the resolution 13232-24 and cultural competency. My family escaped war in Aceh, Indonesia in 1991, and I was around three years old at the time. We resettled in the United States when I was 14, and that was in 2003. But my parents didn't speak English, so the parental role was reversed. I had to do a lot of the translation for the family, and at the same time, I was still learning a new culture and had a hard time assimilating due to the cultural and religious differences. My parents tried so hard to stick to their traditional values and were strict with me. At age 14 was the first time I had any type of schooling, and I had to learn English very quickly so that I could translate for the parents. I had to grow up quickly and learn to deal with adult decisions like mortgage, insurance, medical needs, and more. I displayed a different persona when I was around my family and showed my authentic self in front of others who seemed accepting of me. I felt that I was leading a dual life, and I lost a lot of myself in the process, and it made me miserable. So during my teenage years, living this way became difficult, and I searched for friends and community but didn't find it. Resources were scarce, and I didn't know how to communicate my needs with my parents. I couldn't find any way out of my situation, and that's when I began to think that suicide would solve everything. Now that I'm older and I know more about what's available in my surrounding area, I've learned more about mental health and have the support that I need. My parents, however, are currently going through lifestyle changes, and they're getting older, and I wish that they have therapists and counselor to talk about their issues and learn how to cope with everything. But because of language, culture, religious differences, and finding help has been difficult. This is one of the many reasons why cultural competency and language access is so important for communities and families like mine who need help. I'm here today to advocate for further funding and training for resources like 988 and other mental health programs that save lives and keep families together. Asian Pacific Islander Political Alliance and the Justice for Christian Hall are united in our campaign for mental health access for every Pennsylvanian regardless of what language they speak. Everyone deserves the ability to get the help that they need. Councilmembers, please vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Fay Hall. Fay Hall is next.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak in front of you and share our son's story. And thank you to all who are here to support this resolution. Tonight, we stand here in front of you, not as politicians, not as activists, but we are heartbroken parents. We are the parents of Christian Hall. And devastatingly, we are a testament to the pain and suffering caused by a system that has failed to provide the adequate support for our son and for those who are struggling On the afternoon of December 30, 2020, our 19-year-old son, Christian, he called 911 seeking help while suffering a mental health crisis. His call for help ended in tragedy as he was ultimately shot and killed. In less than six weeks from today, October 31st, we should be celebrating his 23rd birthday. And every day, we think about what we could be doing with him. There's the holidays, and there's the milestones that we will never celebrate with him. Such is the profound grief that we live with and that we wish that no one will ever have to live with. We will always be heartbroken, but we will not be broken. We will continue to share our son's story, no matter how difficult it is, as a call for change, a call for action, and a renewed commitment that no child, no person will ever go through a crisis scared and alone with nowhere to turn to for help. We will continue to share our son's story so that no family will grieve the way we do.
I am Christian Hall's father. Christian Hall's story shines a spotlight on mental health care system, failing the nearly 2 million Pennsylvanians suffering from mental illness, and all of us who know and love them. We must advocate for change, and since his death, we have worked with APIPA to advocate for change for culturally competent and comprehensive mental health care access. Today, we are here in Allegheny County to thank Councilmember Bethany Hallam for introducing Resolution 13232-24 this evening, honoring Christian and highlighting that our current system of calling 911 often does not adequately address mental health emergencies in a compassionate way. Urging our state legislators to pass bills and fund and educate the public about systems such as 988 with culturally competent language is a massive undertaking and that we are committed to seeing through. We need adequate mental health care and crisis response in our state so that a tragedy like the one we have endured does not happen to any other parent or child. We are here today to honor our son, to keep his memory alive, and to advocate for change. We believe that with your support, we can make Pennsylvania a place where mental health services are accessible, where no child or adult has to endure crisis alone, where we can prevent the tragic loss of precious lives. We cannot bring Christian back, but we can work tirelessly to ensure his life and memory are never forgotten. His story, our story, is a call to action for all of us. Let's work together to pass this legislation. Let's make Pennsylvania a place of hope and compassion and understanding. Thank you to Councilmember Hallam for introducing this legislation and urging long overdue changes to be made. Really quick, and I just want to add to this statement. I am a middle school teacher, and my heart breaks when I sat down with my assistant principal last year to tell him that I wanted to raise awareness for 988 in our school. And he said he was so happy to hear that because he had only been there for a few months when I sat down with him, and he said he'd already heard of eight instances of young people who wanted to commit suicide. When I say in a middle school situation, I'm talking about sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We're talking about kids ages 10 to 14. That number has to double for high school students. That number has to be astronomical for people who do not speak the language in this country. We need to make a difference for them, and I would pray that you would pass this resolution as one step towards making that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Margaret Hartman. Next and last would be Katrina Eames.
Hello, my name is Katrina Eames. I am also speaking in support-
I am also speaking in support of the resolution tonight. I grew up here. I loved growing up here, but the entire time I was here, I struggled with my mental health and a couple of months ago chose to leave to get better supports elsewhere in the state. And I don't think that's fair. I went to Northgate High School. I met my husband while attending Point Park University. Our first apartment is on the north side and I got to drive by it earlier today. I lived in Bellevue for years and would serve on the school board there at Northgate. But it's a really hard time right now for a lot of people and I am no exception. And right now, my whole heart is wrapped up in a 15-year-old kid who I love deeply and have taken care of for as long as he can remember at least, but who is legally my brother, which means I didn't get to take him when I left to take care of myself. But I'm watching him and his friends struggle in the same ways that I was when I was 15. And his solution to all of his problems is to go on a run. He wants to run a marathon by the time he is 16 next year. He goes from Avalon through Bellevue and Brighton Heights all the way downtown, sometimes further, sometimes calling us to pick him up. And it is a true act of love that we have crossed multiple bridges to get this boy. Multiple bridges. But anytime he has ever had any problem, I have always been a phone call and a drive away and I could always come and get him and protect him, a way that I know every parent in this room feels about their kid, that they would come at any moment, no questions asked. But I can't always be there for him anymore. I'm not always going to be able to get there quickly enough. And I want to make sure 988 is properly funded so that if I can't get to him quickly enough to help, that someone can and that him and his friends will know who to call and when they call, they will get the help they need. Thank you.
Have approval minutes?
Bill number 13224-24 would be a motion to approve the minutes of the August 20th, 2024 regular meeting of council.
I have a motion. Motion and second. Motion to approve. We have a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 13225-24.
That's a motion to approve the minutes of the August 27th, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Presentation of appointments?
We have none.
Okay. Committee on Appointment Review, second reading. Unfinished business here. We have a large number of nominations this evening, so I'd like the clerk to read them into two groups based on an entity to which individuals are being appointed. Then we'll have a motion and a vote on each group. First up is CYF Advisory Board, 1317924.
And all of the appointees in this group are to the CYF Advisory Board for term effective through September 24th, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13179-24 is the appointment of Dr. Helen Cahalane. 13180-24 is the appointment of Monica Ruiz. 13181-24 is the appointment of Dr. Erica L. Givner. 13182-24 is the appointment of Dr. Michelle Clayton. 13183-24 is the appointment of Hazel Azar D. Carpenter Saunders. 13184-24 is the appointment of W. Aaron Mickens. 13185-24 is the appointment of Aubrey Plesh. 13186-24 is the appointment of Dr. Lysia L. Lentz. 13187-24 is the appointment of Reverend Paul Abernathy. 13188-24 is the appointment of Detective Joseph E. Rickage. 13189-24 is the appointment of Dr. Terry Collin Dillmore. 13190-24 is the appointment of Zoe Banel. 13191-24 is the appointment of April W. Kwiatkowski. 13192-24 is the appointment of Shannon M. Anglero. 13193-24 is the appointment of Melinda Angelus. And 13194-24 is the appointment of Judge Kate Lovelace.
Mr. Nakarati Chappas?
Yes, Vice President Paul Mary. The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 12th, 2024 and affirmatively recommended these appointments and I would like to make that motion, please.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion on the Area Agency Advisory Council.
All the following are indeed to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, all for terms effective through September 24th, 2028. All are sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13195-24 is the reappointment of Laura Poskin. 13196-24 is the reappointment of Jessica Adams. 13197-24 is the reappointment of Carrie Stott. 13198-24 is the appointment of Christine Huntsinger. 13199-24 is the appointment of Jeff Weinberg. 13200-24 is the appointment of Gina Goth. 13202-24 is the appointment of Chris Rossellot. 13203-24 is the appointment of Zina Scott. 13204-24 is the appointment of Elaine Jenkins. And 13205-24 is the appointment of Representative Jessica Benham.
Councilwoman Nakarati Chappas?
Yes, Vice President Paul Mary. The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 19th, 2024 and affirmatively recommended these appointments and I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second. Motion and second. Motion to approve a roll call vote. All those in favor? I'm sorry.
Just a second. On this, I think we need to go one by one.
A roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
On each individual.
Who do you want to start?
You want, all of them? You want to, no?
One.
Which?
13202-24. I'm going to oppose.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote here. Okay.
Can we just hold out 13202?
Yes, you can. All but, okay, so we'll, so we'll, the voice vote will be everything except, by the exception of 13202-24. Okay? So all in favor with that exception? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed? Okay, no opposition? Thank you. That's approved now. We'll have a roll call vote on 13202-24.
Just a quick question for the solicitor. I would record that as the same motion and second as the other, correct?
Separate motion.
Separate motion. Okay, we would need a new motion and second then.
All right. On our new motion?
Vice President Paul Mary.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any opposition to that motion? No? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote then. Thank you.
On the motion approved, 13202-24, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
No.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one. The appointment passes.
Thank you. 13158-24.
That's a resolution ratifying certain year-end transfers pursuant to Section 805.03 of the Administrative Code, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Thank you, Vice President Paul Mary. The Budget and Finance Committee met on September 18th and affirmatively recommended this resolution. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Voice vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
I apologize. This can't be done by voice vote. This has to be a roll call.
Oh, this can't be. All we have to do is roll call.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't read that.
Don't worry about it. On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no's zero. The bill passes.
Thank you. 13151-24.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny, amending the grants and special accounts budget for 2024, submission 05-24, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Thank you, Vice President Paul Mary. The Budget and Finance Committee met on September 18th and affirmatively recommended this resolution. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no's zero. The bill passes.
Thank you. 13151-24.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, providing for distribution of fire safety information by the Allegheny County Health Department to restaurant owners in the course of regular restaurant inspections, sponsored by council members Fatoulas, DiMarco, Hallam, Grisbeck, Macy, Bekowski, Nakarati Chappas, Paul Messina, Filiagi, Katina, and Paul Mary.
Mr. Klein?
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Yes, this is an ordinance, Allegheny County, common of providing distribution of fire safety information by the Allegheny County Health Department to restaurant owners in the course of regular restaurant inspections. This was considered by the Committee on Health and Human Services and affirmatively recommended to this council for passage today. Yeah, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'd like to comment if I may.
It's all right. We'll have a roll call vote.
May I comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. The fact that this is my ordinance, I would like to thank all the members of council for your cosponsorship. Earlier, I passed out photos, I don't know how far they got down there, of the devastation of what can happen from spontaneous combustion. During the committee, we had talked to the Health Board and we had told them that this is an advisory, this is not anything that's against your license if you don't. It's more of an educational type thing where an inspector would come into the building as they normally do and they would just simply discuss and mention spontaneous combustion and hand out a sheet, similar to the one I passed out to you, but not necessarily worded this way. This is just, I pulled this off the internet, but I'm sure the county will come up with their own. But something so simple as that could save lives, and I realize that, you know, save lives and save businesses, and I do realize that the Health Board, it's not their role for fire safety. In the 47 years of my business, we had to, during discussion during the committee, that the fire marshals and other people would have notified me, but quite frankly, nobody ever notified me. Wasn't my insurance company who paid the bill, wasn't the fire marshals that ever came and said, "This is problem," the Health Board or anyone else for that matter. So this particular ordinance is about the fact that if you don't aware of it, you don't know what to do. So this just basically lets everybody know the dangers and you saw those pictures that I passed around, the devastation that your clean laundry can do. So thank you for your cosponsorship and I'd like to make a motion to approve it. I think it already is done or second.
There's a motion and a second?
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay. Do I have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Based upon Councilman Fatoulas's acknowledgement that that is not the role of the Health Department, I vote no.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one. The bill passes.
Thank you. 13157-24.
An ordinance of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying revisions of Article 6 of the Allegheny County Health Department Rules and Regulations Concerning Housing and Community Environment, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. President. At its meeting on September 17th, the Committee on Health and Human Services considered this ordinance and affirmatively recommended its approval by council and it is before you this evening, seeking your approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no's zero. The bill passes.
Thank you. 13226-24.
An ordinance authorizing the County of Allegheny through its Department of Public Works and Law Department to acquire by condemnation a permanent right-of-way and fee simple and a temporary construction easement over part of one parcel of land identified by the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate is Block and Lot 1573J284, being required for the replacement of Fallen Timber Run Bridge Number 6 over Fallen Timber Run located at the intersection of Roberts Hollow Road and Warren Hill Road in Forward Township, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now we go to Public Works. 13227-24.
An ordinance authorizing the County of Allegheny through its Department of Public Works and Law Department to acquire by condemnation a permanent right-of-way and fee simple and a temporary construction easement over one parcel of land identified by the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate is Block and Lot 374H176, being required for the Greensburg Pike Penn Avenue Extension Lateral Support Project located in the township of Wilkins, Allegheny County, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now we go to Health and Human Services. 13229-24.
A resolution of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying air quality permit application and permit fee increases approved by the Allegheny County Health Department pursuant to the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Sections 50516E, 50517G, 50521D, 50523F, 50525E2C, 50528A7, 50548A4A6, 50548B4C, 50549A3, and 50549C8HD, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now we go to Health and Human Services. 1323024.
A resolution providing for a program of temporary exemption from county real estate property taxes for improvements, including repairs, construction, or reconstruction made on industrial, commercial, or business property in a deteriorated area in the borough of Brentwood, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now we go to economic development and job creation. And 13232-24.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny honoring the life of Christian Hall, urging the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass House Bill 1305 and the PA House of Representatives to pass HB 2533, recognizing the importance of access to culturally competent mental health resources, sponsored by council members Hallam, Fatoulas, and Grisbeck.
Ms. Hallam?
Thank you, Vice President Paul Mary.
the 48-hour rule and consider this amendment, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Second. I have one.
We have to vote on waiving the 48-hour rule. Okay, so we're going to vote on waiving the 48-hour rule, and do we need a roll call or do we do a voice vote?
I would recommend a roll call.
Roll call? Okay.
On the motion to waive the 48-hour notice rule, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one, the motion to waive the 48-hour rule passes.
So, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve Amendment Hallam I to amend Bill Number 13232-24, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? No comments? Okay. Do we need a roll call?
I'd recommend a roll call for this, too.
Roll call vote, please.
On the motion to amend, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one, the motion to waive the 48-hour rule passes.
Thank you. 13158-24.
An ordinance authorizing the County of Allegheny through its Department of Public Works and Law Department to acquire by condemnation a permanent right-of-way and fee simple and a temporary construction easement over part of one parcel of land identified by the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate is block and lot 1573J284, being required for the replacement of fallen timber run bridge number six over fallen timber run located at the intersection of Roberts Hollow Road and Warren Hill Road in forward township Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, we go to Public Works. 13227-24.
An ordinance authorizing the County of Allegheny through its Department of Public Works and Law Department to acquire by condemnation a permanent right-of-way and fee simple and a temporary construction easement over one parcel of land identified by the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate is block and lot 374H176, being required for the Greensburg-Pike Penn Avenue Extension lateral support project located in the township of Wilkins, Allegheny County, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, we go to Public Works. 13228-24.
An ordinance of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying amendments to Section 2105.62, asbestos abatement applicability, federal requirements, notices and permits, and Section 2109.07, penalties, fines, and interest of the Allegheny County Health Department Rules and Regulations, Article 21, air pollution control, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, we go to Health and Human Services. 13229-24.
A resolution of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying air quality permit application and permit fee increases approved by the Allegheny County Health Department pursuant to the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Sections 50516E, 50517G, 50521D, 50523F, 50525E2C, 50528A7, 50548A4A6, 50548B4C, 50549A3, and 50549C8HD, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, we go to Health and Human Services. 1323024.
A resolution providing for a program of temporary exemption from county real estate property taxes for improvements, including repairs, construction, or reconstruction made on industrial, commercial, or business property in deteriorated area in the city of Clayton, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, we go to Economic Development and Job Creation. 13231-24.
A resolution providing for a program of temporary exemption from county real property taxes for improvements, including repairs, construction, or reconstruction made on industrial, commercial, or business property in a deteriorated area in the borough of Brentwood, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Now, we go to Economic Development and Job Creation. And 13232-24.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny honoring the life of Christian Hall urging the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass House Bill 1305, and the PA House of Representatives to pass HB2533, recognizing the importance of access to culturally competent mental health resources, sponsored by council members Hallam, Fatoulas, and Grisbeck.
Ms. Hallam.
Thank you, Vice President Paul Mary. I think the public commenters did a great job outlining the reason for this motion today. I just want to kind of summarize what a yes vote for this motion would mean. That would mean that you support asking the state legislature to fully fund 988. It is an amazing mental health resource that really not enough people have access to because of the lack of consistent annual funding for it, and also that those mental health services available to folks in mental health crises are culturally competent, are available in multiple languages, and honoring the life of Christian Hall. So, I would like to motion to approve this motion, and I would like to ask for a second.
Second.
Point of order, Vice President Paul Mary. I also, if my colleagues would look in front of them, I know you've all received an email earlier, but at the suggestion of some of my colleagues whose opinions I very much respect, I would like to direct everyone to Amendment Hallam I. I realize this does not meet the 48-hour rule, and so I would like to motion to waive the 48-hour rule and consider this amendment, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Second. I have one.
We have to vote on waiving the 48-hour rule. Okay, so we're going to vote on waiving the 48-hour rule, and do we need a roll call or do we do a voice vote?
I would recommend a roll call.
Roll call? Okay.
On the motion to waive the 48-hour notice rule, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one, the motion to waive the 48-hour rule passes.
So, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve Amendment Hallam I to amend Bill Number 13232-24, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? No comments? Okay. Do we need a roll call?
I'd recommend a roll call for this, too.
Roll call vote, please.
On the motion to amend, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one, the motion is approved as amended.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any comments? Are there none? Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Do we have a comment? I'm sorry.
Somebody else wants to comment?
I know.
I am going to comment on this. I think that for myself, this is just for me, mental health issues, I would bet, have touched everyone in this room. They have touched mine. I have realized the dearth of services available in the mental health world. We, too, in my family, have waited for those phone calls that you've all painfully referenced about a loved one who was in crisis. There's some things about this bill I would change. For instance, honoring the lives, I would rather be honoring the lives of those who've lost their battle with mental health instead of naming a specific person. I would like to eliminate language that I find to be divisive, and you can read for yourself what I might think is divisive in this bill. I could go on, but at this time, I would prefer to cut through the BS, as one of my colleagues had said, and not make the perfect the enemy of the good. In this particular case, I'm not setting precedent for my party, my friends, for anyone in this room as to what I might do sometime later on another bill, but I would say that it is time to urge the state to get this done. So, my vote's going to be yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Grisbeck.
Very much appreciate all the comments that we heard and all of you that took the time to be here. Just reference how close to home this really is. Upper St. Clair resident Christopher Shepherd, in my district, earlier this year, lost his life after calling, one of his family members calling 911 as a result of a mental health crisis. So, I think it really puts clear how desperately these resources are needed throughout this Commonwealth, but certainly within Allegheny County, and for that reason, I'll be voting yes.
Vice President Paul Mary.
Yes.
So, I would also like to thank those who traveled to be with us this evening and to share their stories. As we know, Pennsylvania, certainly more than half of the adults, it's been recognized with mental illness go untreated, and frankly, the state budget this year has put a large emphasis on mental health and wellness, and so funding has been set aside, the Department of Human Services, the Department of Education, to access. So, I'm hopeful that the state legislature would move forward on this. Personally speaking, I know that I have also experienced, through friends and family, issues of mental health and wellness, and in particular, I would like to just acknowledge the work that is going on locally in my community with the Thomas Jack DeJohnovic Project, Spread Positivity, who lost a child to suicide. And when the 988 system was announced, I just saw the flurry of activity and anticipation that that was such a good thing that will bring about the support quickly to those who need it. And so, I know that from seeing online all of the activity and hearing with colleagues and friends who this would benefit, I will be a yes. So, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Mr. Paul Mary, look, I think this issue in and of itself is very tragic, that a young man lost his life. It's tragic, and I think that there's some things that we can do individually and that we are required to do to reduce opportunities for stuff. On a personal note, my son was encountering some emotional and mental health issues. I'm a gun owner. I own a number of weapons. When my son began to experience those challenges, I took a proactive step. I called the Pittsburgh Police and asked them to come to my house and take my guns and keep them until I addressed his mental health challenges. I had them keep those guns for three years, for three years, until those issues were addressed in a way that I felt comfortable. This is unfortunate. What happened was tragic, but for us to try to pass that, I'm not for it. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to all of those who have traveled some distance to be here tonight. The Center for Rural Pennsylvania is a legislative agency of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, and they published a study in 2022, and the study is entitled "Access to Mental Health Services in Rural Pennsylvania." Now, we know that the mental health crisis in this country affects communities across the country, in both rural and urban settings as well, but it has an especially large impact in rural communities across the country, and certainly that is the case here in Pennsylvania. So, some of the findings of the agency in doing their work are as follows, and it's a pretty good reminder of what the picture really looks like. The most common barriers to supplying mental health services in rural Pennsylvania, based on this study, were the shortages of professionals, issues with professional qualifications and credentialing, fragmented levels of care, flaws in emergency collaboration and funding and insurance challenges. The six core challenges that they identified in accessing mental health services faced by rural residents, especially youth and the elderly, were transportation issues, health insurance as an access issue, stigma and mental health acceptance, distance and travel time, and conflicting work hours, family engagement, and the role of family, and telehealth, internet access, and technology issues as well. The report itself is 55 pages long, and it's pretty specific in terms of all of the barriers to accessing mental health services in this Commonwealth, and most notably in areas of Pennsylvania that are identified as rural parts of the state. So, I believe that this effort today is an opportunity to turn tragedy into hope in some way, and by moving ahead with this, by urging the state legislature to act, maybe there is a glimmer of hope that this is a matter that will get the attention that it so desperately needs. So, with that, I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and thank you all for coming out here and testifying. I think what's important, if your family members or even friends have mental issue problems, don't be embarrassed, don't be ashamed. There's plenty of help out there. You could seek it so that these individuals get the help that they need and continue with a productive and healthy life. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just have a question for my colleague. I want to commend her for taking and offering an amendment here, which addresses some language that some found offensive. The language that was in the original motion, was that taken from the original bills? So, in other words, would a yes vote tonight, on this motion, would that be taking and